Okay, well, it's nine o'clock on April the 24th, so we'll have our special meeting of the Commissioners' Court. And we'll call it to order now. This morning, we've got Brother William Sumners from the church to be our minister here today to say our prayer. I went, it's been a month ago that we had the grand opening of your new church over there. And they've got a lovely building over there, and he's doing a great work. I forget how old you said you were when they told you you was too old to start a church, but they've got a beautiful building over there, and we appreciate you being here today if you'll lead us in our prayer now.
We do thank the Lord this morning. The Bible says that men are to always pray. I have a Father in the name of Jesus. We stand and we come here together in one place to acknowledge you, Father God, in the name of Jesus. You say it in your word, Father God, that we consult you, God, you will direct our paths. Now, Father God, I ask you, God, to look down upon the leaders of this world, look down upon the leaders of this county, of this state, in the name of Jesus. God, we acknowledge you, Father God, that you will open up our mind and our understanding and give us direction, God, how to lead and direct your people, how to lead and to conduct business in this city, in the name of Jesus. Be good stewards. And, Father God, we give you the glory. We give you all the praises, Father God, as we gather you together, in the name of Jesus. God, we come to you because you are God, in the name of Jesus. David says, "I look unto the hills which cometh our help." Our help comes from the Lord, that which made the heavens and the earth. So therefore, Father God, we stand and we bow before you because you are our God, in the name of Jesus. We need help today. The Scriptures say that this poor man, he cried out unto the Lord, and the Lord heard his cry and delivered him from all his trouble. The nation is in trouble. The cities are in trouble. Our schools are in trouble. Our town is in trouble. Our homes and jobs are in trouble. So therefore, God, we come before you because we need your help. We need your direction. So now, Father God, we thank you in the precious name of Jesus. This we ask, in the name of the Father, in the name of the Son, in the name of the Holy Ghost, and let the peoples of God say amen.
Amen.
And amen.
Absolutely. I feel the leaders who took to United States of America, individual, representative, and justice for all.
Number one on the agenda today is public comments and requests. Thank you, preacher.
I thank you so much.
We appreciate you.
Thank you, sir.
I'll be right back.
Thanks, sir.
Public comments and requests for non-agenda items. Have anybody today? Okay. Number two, consider and possibly approve the minutes from the April 10th, 2023 regular meeting of the Commissioners' Court.
Make a motion to approve.
We got a motion by Commissioner Parker.
Second.
And a second by Commissioner Mitchell to approve those. All those in favor?
Uh-huh.
All those opposed? Carries unanimously. We're going to switch the order up here just a little bit. Instead of going on into executive session, we're going to skip down to number eight since they are here. Consider possibly approving request of funds for four generators for Tri-Special Utilities. Ann Rodney.
Good morning.
I done turned my mind off. I thought it was going to be a while, and I done turned my mind off. I got to get it tranked back up. Well, I'm here this morning on behalf of Tri-Special Utility District and General Manager, nine board members, 5,756 members, which serves water to approximately 17,000 people. In February, your February Regular Commissioners' Court meeting, again, requested four 150 KW generators, one for each precinct, one, two, three, and four, and each one of you have a sheet on where that generator would be located. At that time, y'all tabled the request. You took no action on it. Tri-Sud is a nonprofit entity created in 1966 with a $280,000 loan from the FHA. Nonprofit means we don't really make any money. We don't pay out any dividends. We don't have any big compensation packages. We don't have any golden parachute retirement plans. Nobody goes home with a bundle of money from Tri-Sud. All of our revenue comes strictly from water sales. We receive no taxes from, we levy no taxes, receive no taxes from the taxpayer. We don't get any help from the federal government. We don't get any help from the state government. We don't get any help from the county government. We buy water for a certain amount of money, add cost to it, and sell it to the farmers. That's strictly our revenue source, water sales. Every year, we make a budget in November, and it's a time budget. Budget salaries, insurance fees, dues, overhead, maintenance, and maintenance projects. We have, we're a company that's 56, 57 years old, so we're continually having issues with lines that are going bad. Lines are continuing to be giving you problems, so we try to budget them in and do upgrades every year. When you're looking at a line that's giving you problems and leaking a lot of water, it's hard to budget a generator that same year when you have a line that's giving you problems. It doesn't make a lot of sense to buy water from City of Mount Pleasant, and then leak out a line, run down the ditch into the creek. So usually, the generator loses out. The project wins. In the last 15 years, we've been able to budget six generators. We've got 14 pump stations, and we've got six generators at critical pump stations. We need four more ready. It's hard, it's even more hard to budget generators in the future. And let me say this, our board has been extremely proud to keep our rates low and affordable and competitive, but just recently, the city has hit us with a 24.5% increase in the rate that we pay for our water from the city. That's going to make it even more difficult to purchase generators on our own. We're not asking, Tri-Sud is not asking for tax money. What I mean by that is money paid to the county by local taxpayers. What we're asking for is money that the federal government has give down to the states, and the state of Texas has passed down to the counties. State of Texas got $350 billion. They've sent $5.7 billion down to the counties. 254 counties in the state of Texas received some of this money, depending on the size. One of the, and this was known as the American Rescue Plan. One of the major focuses of the American Rescue Plan is infrastructure improvement. We consider putting generators at these stations as infrastructure improvement, keeping water going to your kitchen sink. When you research the American Rescue Plan, there's a lot of information out there about what you can do with the money, how you spend the money, but they're pretty flexible in what you can do with it. I'd like to say one of the major focuses is infrastructure improvement. You can get a lot of information on how much money the states get, how much money is out there, but there's very little information on how much the county gets. I do know for a fact that Franklin County got around $3 million, and they give Cypress Springs Sud, when they bought Cypress Springs Sud, a 550 KW generator for their water intake on Lake Cypress Springs. I don't know how much county I've heard in the neighborhood of $6 million. All we're asking for is $300,000. I received a bid about the first of April from System Power Incorporated. It's a generator company for around $75,000. Four of them would be $300,000. That's what we're asking for. It was mentioned back in the February Commissioners' Court meeting when we brought this up, that we need to look at the grant. Well, what is a grant? That's government, whether it be Texas or federal government, pooling up our tax money, and they're bold, and then they don't let it back out to nonprofit entities after they go through a bunch of paperwork, jump through a bunch of hoops, wait a couple of years, and generally, don't get the grant that they requested. You ask for a $100,000 grant, you think you're getting $100,000, but you end up getting about 60% of it, and then you paid 40%. With all due respect, we think we got a grant. We've got federal money that come down to the states, and states down to the counties. Our tax dollars given to nonprofit entities to be used in a lot of different ways, but one of them being infrastructure improvement. We feel like y'all have already got the grant. We're just asking for $300,000. And as I said, there's a lot of, a lot of different ways that y'all can use this money, and that's one of the things that y'all have to figure out. I have heard you're looking at fire protection, a county-wide fire station, and I don't disagree with that. I think you're headed in the right direction. But don't forget, it takes water to power a pot. Got to have water. Tri-Sud has been real good in providing water to the rural fire departments for several In 2013, we signed an agreement with nearly all of the county fire departments stating certain fire plugs. I think we've got 40 red fire plugs scattered around the county, 40. Before that, there were certain fire plugs that they could use and certain fire plugs that couldn't use. In 2013, we signed an agreement with them that they could use and how to use them, and we also bought backflow devices that you're supposed to put on that fire plug when you hook your fire truck to it. That protects our system from sucking the fire truck water back into our system. They were very expensive, but we bought, we bought them to protect our system, and they're required to use them. And they, they use our water, all at our expense. We don't charge for water. We feel like we owe that to the rural members to protect their homes. I want it understood that we're not in the fire protection business. Our water is not for fire protection. We offer it for the fire departments to fill their trucks, but we're not out there to protect, we don't supply water to protect the homes. We can't do that. That's impossible to do. Tri-Sud thinks that the continuous and safe water flow would be a good use of the funds that y'all are holding in your hands. Any consideration of our request would be greatly appreciated, not only by Tri-Sud, but by a lot of members that live in your precinct. I thank you, and I'll take any questions if you have any. If I can't answer them, we've got an expert that can.
Mr. Glenn, have you spoke with anybody on the grants, on that, writing you a grant for that?
No, no.
I have a lady down in South Texas that does that all the time, and I'm welcome, I'll give you her name and number. She's not only, not only with water supply companies and with fire departments, and you can, you can also speak with her as well.
As I said, we're not big grant people, but what little, we've been in grants, it takes a long time to get a grant, to get your money. We feel like the grant money is here right now, and, you know, out of $6 million, $300,000 is not, not a large sum, and it would tremendously help the people in your precinct to get that continuous flow of water. A generator is, is something that we really wouldn't, I mean, you hope you never use it. You people that's in the chicken business know exactly what I'm talking about. You hope you never use it. You really wish you could do without it because you've got to maintain that thing all year long. There's work you have to do, changing oil filters and stuff like that that costs you money. But when you need that transformer, it's the most, not transformer, I'm sorry, I'm a Swatko guy, and I did for transformers. When you need that generator, it's the most important piece of equipment you got. That's what we're asking for. That's what we're asking you to do for us today. Thank you. Any other questions?
Kent, what was it we set aside for them?
We hadn't set anything aside for that. Jimmy, if you recall, we, we got an increase from the city as well, like they did, and the fire protection's $1.3 million. We set that aside for that and for supply so far. Got any motions or recommendations?
I still think we ought to table this until we work out our other deal. I mean, I'm being fair with that. We're dealing with the city also on some issues, and if we don't table that, we just go, I'd have to say no right now. I know it's been tabled once before, but, I mean, there's reasons why we're all quiet up here because right now, we've, we've got a lot of things we've got to work out too and with the city, and that's the reason why I had no opinion, didn't want to speak about it or anything like that, because we don't really know how we got to spend our funds right yet, all of them. So that's my, my comment.
Got a motion to table it, and once again, if y'all would like to speak with Lefet, I'm working with her as well on some issues that we've got here. Super duper good on what she does and has helped us a tremendous amount already, and that's where we are at this, this time. Still got a motion to table it. You have a second?
We got, we got a long road to go because we don't know what's going to happen in the future on all this, you know? We'd like to do it, but, you know, I don't know how much this, the city's going to cost us, and, you know, we just got to, like Joe, Joe said, you know, we got to rid of watch, you know? We stuff, if we want to spend on, we can't for right now because it's rocky roads ahead look like, and I'll second the table.
Okay. All those in favor of table it?
Uh-huh.
All those opposed?
No.
Jimmy Stover, it passes four to one. So back to number three on the agenda. We're going to recess into executive session, discuss some real estate matters with the Mount Pleasant EDC in accordance with the Texas Governmental Code, Section 551.073. And Barbara, I'm going to ask that you and John Martin both attend with us as commissioners, and Monica, attend to do the recording for us, and then we'll be back in here to open session back up, and it's time you, I've got 9:22, the time we're going to recess, AM. It's 10:38. We'll reconvene to open session now. Item number three, executive session, discuss the real estate matters. I believe we're going to make a motion to table it.
Second.
Got a second by Commissioner Applewhite. All those in favor?
Uh-huh.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously. And number?
Could you second it?
That's item three. And item number four, taking action on the 381. I think we're going to table that and talk about maybe opening up the 381 at some point of time.
Make a motion.
Got a motion by Commissioner Parchman.
Second.
Got a second by Commissioner Mitchell. All those in favor?
Uh-huh.
All those opposed? Carries unanimously.
Number five, consider and possibly take action on real property discussions that the MP EDC would like to partner with the county, and we're going to table that. If we got a motion?
Make a motion.
Got a motion by Commissioner Applewhite.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Mitchell. All those in favor?
Uh-huh.
All those opposed? Carries unanimously. All right. Number six is consider and possibly approve the use of monies received from the OPID litigation. The amount is $22,166.28, which represents 15% of that total. I've spoken with, with the probation department over there and talked with them. There's some concerns about this with them bringing the fentanyl in and stuff, even into our court here with Paul and them having to do pat downs and stuff. It's supposed to be, it is very, very deadly, so if they've got some of that on them and we pat them down, it gets in the skin, it could be something to our deputies and stuff. I think, not all of that, but, but some of that, maybe $10,000 we ought to give to the probation to run the drug court and then to get training for those, those deputies coming in and out on those, those cases across the street and here as well. Barbara, did you say about where you want to appropriate the rest of that funds into that one fund or?
I've got it set aside in one fund because my understanding is we're going to get more money from this over the course of the next 18 to 20 years. The number that I've got is $70,000 in total that we may receive, so just as the court feels, as you want to, my understanding is that we can do, this is the first round of these funds, and we, we can just simply take those and not use them for anything unless we have needs, but every county has needs. So $10,000 for the drug court and the rest for training on this one.
Well, well, yes, ma'am. I think that that'd be more than appropriate, and it may, that $10,000 may include some of the training. I'll get with them on a total on that, but yes, the $10,000 for the drug court, and if that doesn't run it through the end of the year, then we'll put that into training. Got a second?
Do you make a motion already?
I did.
I'll second it.
Got a second by Commissioner Mitchell. All those in favor?
Uh-huh.
All those opposed? Carries unanimously. Number seven, consider and possibly approve the appointment of new member to represent the Titus County Lakes Regional Board, and that's going to be Nancy Lefet, is who, they've sent a letter from me for her to be on there. Nancy does have a child that is under their care to some degree. Was speaking with them there at the, at the office. They like it to be someone that, that has been involvement with that, kind of helps them in knowing what they need and don't need, and so that's who I would recommend for that.
Who'd you say the name was again?
Nancy Lefet. Nancy Hattar Lefet. That's who, that's who they recommended, and that's who I'll recommend. I hadn't, I talked with two other people, and they declined wanting to be on that board. It's all mental health and stuff, issues over there at their place.
I make a motion to appoint her to the board.
Got a motion by, by Commissioner Mitchell to appoint Nancy to that board.
Second then.
Got a second by Commissioner Parchman. All those in favor?
Uh-huh.
All those opposed? Carries unanimously. Number eight's been tabled. Number nine, consider possibly approve the purchase of two new white Mack MD7 six-yard dump trucks through Sourcewell Purchasing Company for $208,572. Is that, that's going to be community or is that yours, Jimmy?
It's mine.
You want to speak on those dump trucks or?
Well, yeah, me and Jody was, was in Texas Canyon and talked to the Mack dealer down there. That's where we're getting the, the other truck from.
Yes, sir.
And I had, had toyed with the idea of getting some, some others because mine had started, they're 2005 models, and they started giving some problems, got quite a few miles and all on them. Last year, we had to have transmission redone one of them, and, and so I decided that it's probably best to go ahead and, and.
Did they give you a timeframe on getting those, Jimmy?
He said he hoped, hoped we could get these by the end of the year.
End of the year, yeah. And then those two that you've got, then we'll go those through auction or something?
Those will be auctioned, yes.
I make a motion for the purchase of the two trucks.
Got a motion made by Commissioner Mitchell for the purchase of those two Mack trucks.
Second.
Got a second by Commissioner Applewhite. All those in favor?
Uh-huh.
All those opposed? Carries unanimously. Approve the oral and written reports of the county officials.
Make a motion, we approve them.
Got a motion made by Commissioner Parchman to approve the minutes of the oral written reports.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Parker. All those, yes, ma'am?
I don't know if we can interrupt you, I'm sorry.
You don't bother me.
There's just one item here on the back, back page there, you have a summary of the Titus County Volunteer Fire Department Annual Financial Reports. The contract requires that they give us these. This year, we've gotten earlier than ever before. It shows how much money they had in the bank at the end of the year. Last year, their revenues, their expenses, and then how much bank they had, how much money they had in the bank at December 31st. I just wanted to call that to your attention.
Sure, we've gotten all of those.
Yes, sir, we have.
All departments. Last year's a little bit, we're great.
This year's earlier, and we work through it. They're not all the two numbers, but they're what they report to us.
So we've got a motion by Commissioner Parker to approve those, and a second by Commissioner Parchman. All those in favor?
Backwards.
Backwards.
I was just, I was just, I was just.
Party made the motion, I second.
Jeff made the motion, seconded by Parchman. I'm sorry. Dyslexic. All those in favor?
Uh-huh.
All those opposed? Carries unanimously. Carries unanimously. Considering possibly accept the treasurer's report as a matter of record?
Make a motion, we accept it?
Got a motion by Commissioner Parchman.
Second.
Got a second by Commissioner Mitchell. All those in favor?
Uh.
All those opposed? Carries unanimously. Approve the budget amendments. Barbara, you have those for?
Yes, we have two budget amendments, number 20 and 21. The first one is for an item that was approved in commissioners' court, item 10. It's the increase to the city taco for the volunteer fire department for their insurance that was approved, $500 a month for the next six months. That's number 20. Number 21 is, there's various departments come by. We have an additional amount we're going to receive for insurance proceeds on the Ford Ranger that's damaged in the accident out here in the park that someone hit it. So there's an increase of $625 of insurance proceeds, and then also an increase in insurance repairs because those money will be used to repair that truck. The second piece of that, the second item on that is for Justice Prentice, continue from the done. She has an employee that was turned out for one year, and she's requesting an increase for that person. She has had difficulty in keeping staff, and the other person in her office resigned last week. Did not actually resign, just left their piece on her desk, and so she's, she wanted to come this morning, but it takes a lot of work from the weekend to catch up on, so she's not here. I do want to also tell you that now we have an open position at precinct two. She would like to have someone with experience, someone who can become and stay with her long term. So the total cost of that thing raises $1,065, and she's absorbing that within her department from office supply.
Now, Barbara, excuse me, Barbara, now with, with her losing the other one, will that not offset some of that as well?
It will offset some of that, but we don't know how much.
Okay.
At this point, so this one just, this is only through the end of the year, through the end of September.
Until she hires somebody that'll be?
Yes.
Okay.
What she does, she starts people out and on, it's some, some offices in the county hires someone in at the rate that the person who left was making. Judge Dunn does not do that. She pays them based on their current experience. The person that left her had no office experience, and she's worked to train her, but that just, just didn't work out. So that's why she's requesting this increase because this, this one who's been here a year has been here, obviously, for a year, and has done a good job, and has learned how to do it, and did have prior office experience, and that's what she's looking for. So you'll see that added in the newspaper. Does that answer your question?
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Mr. Clark, repair maintenance fund. There's money in fund dollars. These things have only been used for R and M expenses, and it's $5,000 that Martin's car lot just requested to be in the scheme. It's not money that we need for recitals, it's designated for that purpose. The last one is related to the purchase of the two new dump trucks that we just discussed. The funds we had set aside for those two dump trucks was $200,000, and we saw the cost was $208,572. So because that's for precinct four, Mr. Parker wanted to reduce his road materials so that he would have funds to purchase these two trucks. And that's all on page one.
Okay. Got a motion on approving the budget amendments?
I make a motion to approve the budget amendment.
Got a motion by Commissioner Mitchell to approve the budget amendments?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Parker. All those in favor?
Uh.
All those opposed? Carries unanimously. We decide pay orders and approve payments?
Make a motion, we pay our bills.
Jimmy makes a motion?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Mitchell. All those in favor?
Uh.
All those opposed? Carries unanimously. Closing comments. Commissioner Parchman, you have anything?
Have it.
Commissioner Mitchell?
I have it.
Commissioner Applewhite?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Parker?
Yep.
Okay, well, then I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Got a motion by Commissioner Applewhite to adjourn?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Parker. All those in favor?
Uh.
All those opposed? Carries unanimously also.